Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will call the July 14th meeting of the Common Council. I will ask our clerk to call the roll to determine a quorum.
Elder Person Keen.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Stefanski.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Grisham.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Nine present. Elder Person Tenorio is excused. Please rise if you are able and join us in the pledge of allegiance, which will be led this evening by Elder Person Keen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to item D on the agenda this evening. We have two public hearings. I will ask our clerk to read public hearing number one.
Ordinance to amend the official West Alice zoning map, amending section 12.05.
Mr. Share.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Our first hearing is a rezoning to basically seek conformance with our comprehensive plan, rezoning approximately eight properties within the northern gateway of Highway 100. The area includes lands from the North City Limits, the top of your screen here, to Washington Street on the east side of Highway 100, which runs in a north-south direction here, east to the Union Pacific Railway on this side. So, and then the list of properties include a variety of light industrial uses, some, some commercial, Playtime, Doggy Daycare, the north here, the first property on the top, going down, moving downward south, Rider Truck, Northern Tool, Gray Bar Warehouse and Office, small parking lot, which is used by, it's actually owned by Gray Bar, but was formerly used by the Hobo Property, the Hobo Property, which is a former retailer, and then U-Haul, and the Mayfair Village Mobile Home Community at the very south. So those are the eight properties that are subject and affected within this rezoning area. They're all currently zoned manufacturing, M1 manufacturing district. This is just another aerial view of the same thing we were just looking at. Roughly about 30 acres in total, and on the left, left-hand side of your screen in purple there, that's all the manufacturing zone lands, all of which within this area are zoned manufacturing. It provides, I guess, a variety of light industrial, ranging to heavier industrial uses, things like self-storage, vehicle leasing, commercial vehicle leasing, outdoor storage, warehousing. Those are the types of things that commonly happen within a manufacturing M1 district. On the right-hand side is our future land use map from our 2030 comprehensive plan. As you see, that's a different color. That's red, red meaning commercial. That's how we envision this, this corridor. When the comprehensive plan was, was developed back in 2011, many, many different areas of the city, we had a different vision for, you know, areas like Six Points and the, what is now 68th and Mitchell, and Highway 100, no different. It's an area that we foresaw, at least in this northern gateway, is converting to more of a commercial reuse. More recently, in, earlier this year, the completion of the Highway 100 corridor study was, was presented to the Common Council. And this is just a view looking north from the Hobo Property, north to the North City Limits, Wauwatosa in the distance here, this being Highway 100. So that's the existing vision. The Highway 100 plan contemplated, you know, a variety of, and a diverse mix of different uses for the Highway 100 corridor in total, and then notably focused in on the northern gateway area, on the north, basically within this rezoning area we're talking about here, in the north end of Highway 100. This area, if you've ever come into the city from, from the south, or when leaving the city headed north, you know, you notice the, the, some of, some buildings which happened to be vacant, the Hobo Property, U-Haul, Playtime Doggy Daycare, outdoor truck storage, and so on. The city is looking at enhancing this area, as well as other areas within the Highway 100 corridor, for more vibrant uses, a higher and better use. And that's part of the reason why, you know, we're looking at a rezoning of this area, is that currently is, is currently zoned manufacturing, it's fairly, you know, somewhat limiting in what, in terms of the diversity of types of uses. Manufacturing doesn't necessarily allow residential or multifamily development. So we're looking at creating a district that would support a little bit more dynamic end users, mixed uses, breweries, food incubators, restaurants, destinations. The area, Highway 100 corridor, does lack somewhat of a connection, even though it does run three and a half miles through our city. It's been tagged as, as an area that's been haphazardly developed over, you know, decades of time. So we're trying to change a little bit of that through this, this rezoning, as well as future changes along other parts of the corridor. But we see it as be, becoming a more walkable destination, a more walkable corridor. It does have great connection to the Hank Aaron State Trail, and then there's also opportunities for not only a variety of different uses, mixed uses, but also we see perhaps some higher-density residential, medical office buildings, and other commercial development. This is one such concept from our Highway 100 study, which shows the reuse of the Hobo Building for a food incubator, retail use, and brewery, carving off a portion of the north end of the building for a small park space, which would make a connection to the neighborhood. All of the parking would be behind the building, and then you could have additional office, medical office, and maybe even some very light flex industrial to the north. So the path to date towards rezoning to commercial has included, you know, our Highway 100 corridor study, there was a moratorium that was put in place in mid-April, on April 22nd. That moratorium extended for another 60 days, renewed basically on June 16th, and that moratorium is in place until August 18th. Our planning commission meeting met on the 24th, and they recommended advancement of the rezoning. They recommended council pass or adopt the rezoning to, to where we are tonight. And on the right, this is just a copy of the notice, part of the notice that went out to, you know, the eight affected property owners. So planning commission and staff are recommending that the area be rezoned to C3 commercial, which would align and conform with the 2030 land use plan. It also enhanced and set the stage for many of the opportunities, as evidenced within the Highway 100 study. To date, there's been one objection that's been received, received. There may be some people here tonight to, to speak on behalf of their properties. While council could certainly make a decision this evening, you're not required to. You have time to make a decision. Again, the moratorium does expire August 18th, but you could, I guess you do have another, after this council meeting, there's one more council meeting that you could use to, to think about it. So just, just putting that out there. One of the property owners is U-Haul, and they, they had shared this at the planning commission meeting. While it's not necessarily a topic of rezoning, it is what they would like to do. And it is a potential issue if, if, if rezoned to commercial, the city, you know, they would not be allowed to build a self-storage and facility on the Hobo Property, which they've purchased. These are just some different views. And I believe a representative is here this evening to speak on, on their behalf. So that's all I have for this first hearing. I'm happy to entertain any questions, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Share, for the presentation. Are there any questions from the members of the Common Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale.
Yeah, Steve, I have a question regarding the old Sam's Club. There was any change from zoning from previously than now? I mean, is it going to be more light industrial that site? The old Sam's Club?
Yeah, the old, the old Sam's Club property was, in 2016, the city had an initiative to rezone properties further south, south of Greenfield Avenue, including the Sam's Club property, and some other properties that were zoned manufacturing. That was rezoned to commercial C3. And so currently, the Sam's Club property is zoned C3, community commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Devine.
Elder, Elder Person Grisham.
Steve, I just have a question. As far as the notices that went out that impacted the eight businesses, they are aware that they're grandfathered into this, correct? They're, they're not going to have to move? There was a, a lot of calls that came through specifically for Doggy Daycare, and I think we visited that at our last council meeting, but I just wanted clarification on that.
You're correct, Alderman Grisham. The businesses that are, that are there today may continue to do business as they, as they have. They, you know, business, property owners could sell those properties, and someone else, you know, could come along and you, and continue to use them as they have been. So they can even, you could even sell the property to someone else, and if they use it in the same manner, that's acceptable. The problem would become if there was a lapse in occupancy of 12 months or greater. That's when the city would expect the, to comply with the zoning district.
Okay, thank you.
If, if rezoned, yeah.
Any other questions from the members of the council? Seeing none, are there any questions on this item from the members of the audience? Please come up to the podium. Please give us your name and address for our official record, and sign in either before or after your comments. Thanks.
Alex Sunlightner, U-Haul Company, 505 East Capital Drive, Milwaukee, Wisconsin. Forgive me if you can't hear me. I'm new to this too. So I'm actually here more, more or less just to ask for some help, ask for a chance. We purchased the property in March, March 17th. We found out April 22nd that a moratorium was put in place. We have attempted to make contact with a number of different people to try and set up meetings. Thankfully enough, we were just last month able to meet with the planning and zoning department to express our concerns. Of course, we purchased the Hobo Property for $3.7 million with the expectation that it matched the zoning that was on the board. We have yet to have a chance to even sit down and work on what could be the property. The image you saw earlier was a glimpse of what we could do. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to get any feedback on, on that imaging to even make some amends or, or change to, to bring to council here. As of last month, our, our last meeting, we again tried to sit down, of course, coronavirus and everything that has gone with it has slowed things down. So we haven't had a chance to actually work out any plans. So I am now stuck with a $3.7 million building after six months of phone calls to the zoning and planning department to verify our use would be permitted. Each time, we were told absolutely, wouldn't be a problem, wouldn't be a problem. I understand that February, this study took place. However, typically when these take place, it starts much earlier than that. My call started in August, when we became interested in the property, through December, up to March, before we purchased the property, with no understanding that this was, this was taking place. So we bought this property in good faith, again, for $3.7 million to turn it into a self-storage facility. On my call this morning with the zoning and planning department, after about a two-week delay and an email to the mayor, I appreciate you helping me out there. I got a phone call today, and my recommendation was to find a conforming use for the property or sell it. Now, I, I can't just create a business within U-Haul. You know, we've been in business for 75 years. We kind of have our angle on what we do. So I can't just create something out of thin air to, to use 101,000 square foot building. I don't need office space. I have two of them in, in the Milwaukee area already, and I'm not interested in selling the property in the middle of a pandemic. So I am looking, even if you don't vote tonight, to at least give us time to work together. I have a huge investment in this property. I plan on investing three to four million dollars more into this property to create something that is a gateway. I look at those images, of course, I'm a little bit biased, but that's what I'd want to see rolling into a city. Now, in order to move into a city, you need a couple of things. Need a U-Haul truck, need a place to put your stuff, and you need our services to sell you boxes of moving supplies. We're overwhelmed at our current location, of course, next door. And again, I appreciate this new zoning plan. However, I own two of the properties and have no plans to sell. Gray Bar's been in business for a number of years as well. So although this is a future program, it seems to be a little too far into the future to start making decisions today. So I'm just asking for some time, or at the end of the day, I would love your vote to say no and not accept this new zoning ordinance. And if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
We're really just, at this point, are more listening unless anyone has questions? No? Okay.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under public hearing number one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Attorney Brian Randall of Davis and Keelfell 111, East Kilborn Avenue, Milwaukee, here on behalf of Mayfair Village Mobile Court, Mobile Home Court LLC, the property owner of the Mobile Home Park, 1,000 South 108th Street. It's good to be back here at City Hall. It's been about a year since I've been here before this body, but times have changed, and yet some faces look familiar even through plexiglass. I'm here because, and I should introduce Kay Stiza is right behind me, kind of blocking her apologies, but Kay is one of the family owners of the Mayfair Village Mobile Home Court, and it has been in existence for many, many decades, and in that family ownership for many decades. As the longtime property owners and stakeholders, we're in a position of having some questions, a few concerns, and certainly recognizing, as the last speaker mentioned, we're in the midst of a pandemic. I know the plan commission had a meeting last month. I, I know the city's been working on this study for quite some time, but it seems to be moving relatively rapidly, and it's a tough situation to just make sure we're having all the right conversations and, and questions answered. That said, I do appreciate, I did catch Steve at his desk today, and so I appreciate staff being able to answer a number of my questions right out of the blue and on short notice. But still a couple others, and I'll, I'll cover those in a moment. I mentioned that the pandemic is somewhat extraordinary, and, and these are tough times to do business. I can see the city is, is doing a good job, and, and certainly the internet helps to find information online, and, and all your plans and studies are there. But it's also somewhat extraordinary with respect to a property rights issue, when the eight parcels you're looking to rezonate, none of the property owners initiated that rezoning. None of the property owners asked for that to occur. And so what's going to happen is, if you vote, and if you do this, you'll create legal non-conforming uses for seven of the eight. If, and I think Steve mentioned this in his staff report, but it definitely is in your written staff report, seven of the eight will suddenly become legal non-conforming uses. And, and that's okay, because as, as Steve did highlight, that doesn't mean the businesses have to close and they're being pushed out. But it does create some concern, and, and you heard the last speaker. From our perspective, my clients, we're in an equally awkward spot because we're legally non-conforming in the manufacturing zoning as it is. So it's almost like we're without a zoning home in this situation, and, and maybe we should be asking to be zoned high-density residential, because that's really what we are. If you look at a number of your studies and, and your plans, we have a number of residential units, and the five or seven acres that, that Steve showed on the plan is a high-density. Instead of a high-rise apartment building, we have a number of units very closely spaced. But that gives rise to our issues. We're manufactured zone today. We're at the south end of, of this corridor study. We're not really the gateway feature. We're, we're not opportunity site number one. We're kind of just at the end, and, and we are a different use than what's envisioned and what's there now. And, and I submit to you that though that is still a good opportunity to have, and still a good thing to have in the city. I did take a chance. I've reviewed the public hearing notice. I was able to print it all out. You guys have a, a good amount of information in that notice, the legislative records, the Highway 100 corridor study, the 2030 comprehensive plan, and that land use plan. In the 2030 comprehensive plan, so your zoning, your city attorney will tell you this, you have a very good city attorney, that any rezoning decisions will have to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And then the city's been working at this since the 2010 comp plan, then 2030. But I want to point out a couple of things that are important just to keep in mind. And, and this cover sheet in that comp plan, it makes reference of among the important things for the city's vision, housing. City is to maintain a variety of housing types at a range of densities, styles, and costs to accommodate the needs and desires of existing and future residents. And in redevelopment and land use, those bullet points, redevelopment identify and transform underutilized properties throughout the city, and land use encourage the continuation and future development of compatible land uses within our urban community, continuation being the point of emphasis there. We're not a vacant storefront. I understand that's a concern, and that's an issue, and why staff is trying to do some long-range planning. But we're not a vacant site to be redeveloped. We're looking to have you continue the land use that we have, and with housing to provide a very important portion of housing here in the city for a certain price point and a certain lifestyle that people are looking for. And I understand there's a continuum of different housing styles within a manufactured home community, but the Stizes take great pride in the maintenance and the upkeep, and, and what they provide for their residents and the types of residents they have, who are your constituents and, and residents here of the city. With respect to the Rosehill neighborhood, that's where we are. So I'm now pointing to page 3-8 of the 2030 plan. It gives two recommendations. The first is, ensure that the proper standards for mobile home maintenance are being enforced in the area. And again, the Stizes stand behind, they believe they have a very nice community for their residents, and they are following that recommendation, and that's in your own plan. But then seemingly contradicting that, a couple bullet points later, encourage the redevelopment of the Mobile Home Park. So, you know, right there, black and white, here we are, maybe we're not acceptable, maybe we're not desired, but yet ensure that proper maintenance. We think that you can maybe have it both ways. I know there are other mobile home parks in the area. Maybe there are some that are ready to be redeveloped. But in this instance, as long as we adhere to that first bullet point, that you're able to ensure and that we live up to the maintenance standards, that there isn't any reason to really push us out and to not have part of that community embraced for what it is. Finally, in that comp plan, there's a map, page 3-24. It's interesting that at the time of doing this 2030 comp plan, the Grafe Engineering Firm, they actually did not include the Mayfair Village Mobile Home Court Park Site in the northern gateway corridor. As I mentioned, we're kind of at the southern end of what we're talking about now, where that one parcel they tacked on. I can see on a map why it makes sense, but even in the original visioning study, we're not really in the corridors and the gateway areas that have been previously discussed. With respect to the Highway 100 corridor study, which is a relatively newer document, I know as Steve mentioned, that was back in February. I've had the chance to look at that. A couple interesting things, and, and this goes to the types of housing we provide. On, on page 31, there's this graphic that shows what the existing user groups are in the city. Gen X, urban, metrofusion, these are a couple of terms that are kind of new to me, or at least they're slamming things together. Middle ground, but then under senior styles, the Highway 100 corridor plan acknowledges that these older individuals or couples area, excuse me, these older individuals or couples are adapting to life as empty nesters and preparing for fixed-income lifestyles. Many live in senior living complexes or mobile homes. And then the salt-of-the-earth category, the vast majority of households in this segment are not college-educated and live in attached unit or mobile homes which they own. Point being, the corridor study did a good job identifying who comprises West Alice, and there are some very important constituencies, fixed incomes and people who may choose to live in a community like what we offer. And it's not to say that there isn't a home for those. And so our concern is, as we look at commercial zoning for that particular site, that it sends the wrong signal and it creates challenges for us as we continue to maintain and keep up inconsistency with your comp plan. So we recognize the goal of the rezoning. We understand and appreciate the legal non-conforming use explanations. Certainly as a lawyer, and I've pretty recently just become involved, so I'm still working through your zoning code and, and how those definitions may apply. Having the opportunity to have a frank conversation with Steve was very good. We want to maintain the community. We want to make sure a unit that may not be in the best shape, we can swap out, and that our lots, as they are viewed as individual units, aren't the whole parcel, which I think is how the city attorney would interpret the legal non-conforming use as it relates to our property. But those are all a lot of questions that I think merit discussion. And so we would ask that, as we work through those questions with staff, that there may not be a vote tonight, and maybe further discussion, or perhaps some of you would have other feedback and discussion on that, so that we can allow, to continue to be allowed to have that important sense in place in the community. The final point that we are going to raise with staff is related to another parcel that we do own just on the southwest, and this land use map from, from your website shows a vacant parcel that we own that's not on that map, that's not a part of our current parcel, but we do own it. And we've been working with staff, my clients have, a number of attempts of trying to figure out how we can attach that or make sure it's zoned uniformly with how we are using it now. That's not on your notice, so you can't take action, you can't do anything with it with formal respect, but I brought it up just because that's something that we do want to work through with your staff, and I didn't want you to be surprised about it in the future. But so with that said, we appreciate the hard work that staff has been doing. We recognize what the vision is to accomplish, but the vision is the very future. Today's reality is, we have a wonderful community. We have a number of your constituents there living, and we're not looking to rezonate to manufacturing or even commercial, but we'd like to keep working with staff on how to make sure that's the best for everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council on public hearing number one? Or have questions about public hearing number one? Okay, seeing none, we will close our first public hearing, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number two.
Resolution relative to determination of application for a special use permit for 160 Driving Academy, a proposed business to be located at 900 blocks, South 63rd Street.
Mr. Share.
Thank you, Mayor. Driver's Academy 160 is a educational use, which is considered a special use within the manufacturing zoning district. The specific use here is going to be located on the very east end of Washington Street, highlighted here in yellow. Just for context, 70th Street is on the far left-hand side of your slide here, Washington Street, which passes by the Ellis Yards Development, Whittnall Summit, Bellocke Sign Company, terminates here at the, the east end, and then that, that is where access begins for the roughly five-acre chunk of land. So the specific use will have 15 students at any given time. Basically, they're onsite, they're going to be conducting the basic safety maneuvers to get their, ultimately get their CD, CDL license. There will also be some field instruction, which will take place out on the open road. They expect about two trucks per day for that, for the two trucks going out, two trucks coming back at the end of the day. Hours of operation are Monday to Friday, 8:00, 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. As mentioned, the property is zoned M1 manufacturing. It is considered a special use, the training element. It's a five-acre site. On-site, they're going to have, you know, the, obviously the area, paved area here for truck maneuvering. There will be a small platform area, observation area, built on the south end of the site. The overall property is currently bound by a chain-link fence. They are proposing to construct an additional 100-foot fence here on the, along, parallel with Mineral Street. And then there's also some, some toilet facilities here that are planned near the student area. There is parking for 12 parking stalls that are going to be provided on-site. You, you notice here that the zoning ordinance requires many more parking stalls, 45 parking stalls. But in this case, I mean, it is a wide-open paved area. I don't think there's going to be any problem for a few additional cars should, should there be 15 students or maybe the transition between classes. All ingress and egress is going to be right here at this point, and just based on that previous slide, it's all going back out, you know, from this point, it's going back out to 70th Street. The green area here is existing growth, a wooded area along the south. The green area here is existing growth, wooded area along the southeast side of the site. And there is residential to the southeast and east of 63rd and south of Mineral. Motor Castings is over this way, and then the Whittnall Summit property is to the east. This is a view of that wooded area. It's basically, this picture was taken, or Google street view was taken at this corner intersection of 64th and Mitchell, looking here in that direction. So you're looking northeast, and this is Mineral Street here. So Plan Commission had recommended that, you know, they recommend conditional approval, some minor site conditions. Otherwise, there have been no objections to date. However, I did get a call from Alderman today with a concern that they received from a constituent nearby, basically more or less concerned about the hours of operation and how and where trucks are going to enter and exit the site. Well, certainly, I, you know, there will be no exiting onto Mineral or to 64th or to 63rd. All of that traffic is going to go westbound out Washington Street to 70th Street, and then likely north to I-94. So I have no further presentation, but if there are any questions, happy to entertain.
Did you present any questions from the council on public hearing number two?
I'll turn on my microphone, and I'm assuming you all heard me ask for questions from the council. Still none. Is there anybody in the audience with questions on public hearing number two? Okay, seeing none, we will close our second public hearing. We will move on to item E, which is citizen participation. This is the chance to receive information from members of the public during this 30-minute period. Each speaker must announce to the council their name and address, sign in at the podium, and limit their comments to no more than five minutes. Is there anybody that wishes to address the council under citizen participation this evening?
Good evening, Mayor Devine and common council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you again. My name is Jim Curlin. I'm the president and CEO of Beyond Vision. Beyond Vision is a 501(c)(3) social enterprise with the vision statement of enriching the lives of Americans who are blind through the dignity of work valued by customers and community. So we purchased the former Sam's Club from Walmart approximately a year ago, last June. And I would just say that to reintroduce you, Beyond Vision is all about jobs, 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 jobs. That's what we're about. We're currently employ about 130 people. Over half of them are visually impaired and blind. The other half, or little less than half, are typically sighted. What we do is enable careers for people with vision loss by doing value-added work to, for commercial companies such as Harley-Davidson, Briggs &amp; Stratton, GE, and many other commercial partners. We also provide call services for the state of Wisconsin. We do, for example, the unclaimed property call program for the state of Wisconsin, and we just picked up the unemployment insurance call program for the state of Wisconsin small businesses. In addition, we do a lot of work for the US government. We make, we do value-added work to products such as privacy filters, floor mats, specialty toolkits for the Department of Defense. Our plan is to double or triple the number of jobs, and this facility will enable that. We're cramped for space in our current facility, and our plan is to increase jobs by 100, 200, 300 additional jobs in West Dallas over the next few years. And again, this facility will help enable that. These are also the kind of jobs that West Dallas needs. We're part of the solution and not part of the problem, speaking specifically to your traffic saturation problem on Highway 100. 95% of our direct employees are visually impaired and so therefore use public transportation. So, you know, these are the types of jobs that are not going to create additional traffic burden on Highway 100, which is, at least before COVID, was saturated. So that's part of our attraction to this location, is access to buses. It's absolutely critical to our mission, and obviously, the major corridors of Highway 100 going north-south, and Greenfield going east-west is really important to enable our employees to get to work and go home. You have a growing number of dark stores in West Dallas. Everybody realizes that, and COVID only made that worse and exasperated the problem. Our vision is to repurpose this property and make it a vital part of the community. Alderman Vitale was nice enough to hand out a brochure for you of our Visibility Center. And, you know, some of you have seen it from last year, the existing Alderman. This will reintroduce you to our plan. As I understand, three new Alderpersons, so this will formally introduce you to our vision. So what is our vision? Our plan is to create what we're going to call the Visibility Center. Essentially, it's a one-stop shop for people with vision loss to be able to pursue their dreams, to be all they can be regardless of their lack of visual acuity. You can see in the brochure, we intend to build offices under the existing roof line. We're not going to add to the building. We also plan to convert as much as possible of the parking lot into green space, which will include a walking park that'll enable or be available to our employees as well as to the West Dallas community. Our zoning request change from C3 to M1 is being considered by the Planning Commission next week, Wednesday, the 22nd. If we're able to get the zoning change, that will allow us to operate all under one roof, which is obviously our preference over having our manufacturing, essentially our machine shop, in a different facility. Architectural design is underway. We'll be submitting the building request application for the first stage later this week or early next week. That first stage will be signage and a facade facelift, in other words, a paint job, later this week or early next week, as I said. We're moving forward with our plan independent of the zoning decision. In closing, we're seeking to be a good corporate citizen with the city of West Dallas, and we hope to find a mutually beneficial relationship moving forward. So I look forward to working with you in the future. Thanks.
Thanks very much. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council under citizen participation this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will close citizen participation. We will go on to item F. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess. Those room numbers are listed at the top of page two on your agendas. Moving to item G, mayor's report. I just have one quick thing. This evening, I just want to take a minute to congratulate all the graduates from not only the two, three high schools in West Dallas, but also in the area. I know this weekend was the drive-through graduation ceremony for West Dallas Central and West Dallas Hale, and I realize that this was not the graduation that a lot of those families envisioned, but I want to thank the school district for taking steps to try to give them some element of a ceremony, and the circumstances should really not take away from the amazing accomplishment that they all experienced, so I want to wish them all the best in the future. That does conclude the mayor's report. Do we have any reports from the Alderpersons?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Stefanski.
I just want to thank everybody who helped make the Fourth of July Parade possible, and all the participants who are in it, and all those that came out to see it. Everybody seemed to have a good time, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other Alderpersons' reports?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval of the minutes of the common council meetings of June 16th and June 25th, 2020.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by Alderman Vitale. Were there any adjustments to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Minutes are approved. I will ask for a motion to place items four and five on file and refer items six through 11 to the city attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman.
Hoss.
Second by, through four plates of plastic, I can hear them. Second by Alderperson Reiki. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item carries. We do not have any standing committee reports under item K.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
There is a motion and a second by Alderperson Reiki. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We are in recess.